All right, ladies and gentlemen. I don't have your attention. We're gonna go ahead and get this December 4th board meeting moving. We apologize for the delay. Mr. Cross is probably en route, but he won't mind if we go ahead and get started in his absence. First, we're gonna start off with an invocation. If anyone wants to bow their heads and pray with me, please. And Heavenly Father, we come to you and thank you for the many blessings and opportunities you give us each and every day. We ask a special blessing on this board and the people in here that you gave us wisdom as well as the rest of the boards that are probably meeting today either this morning or this evening. You know what's in our heart and you know what the needs are for the community. We ask that you have a special blessing for those folks that need your help. And we ask for these things in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. All right, moving on to public comments. Mr. Guy, Mr. Paul, floor is yours, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Well, the good news is this is the last round of our insurance we'll have to worry about this year.
Oh, this year? I thought you were saying like, well, you quit.
It comes around every year and it'll make your life go by real quick if that's what you do for a living. But this is the workers' compensation. And as usual, how we've been doing it, I think it's worked pretty well because I know instead of going through all this at this time...
Guy, I think you meant to start off by saying congratulations Pearl Pirates winning the football championship.
Now, that is great, too. That's great. Well, Tucker Wells won the Rankin County Rural Tournament in the girls. Pizzga won the boys.
Yeah, I was gonna correct you.
That was great.
It's taking your thunder out, aren't you?
Yeah, just flattening that right on there.
What we've done is put together a book and Ms. Laura will have that. You can look at it. I think she may lay it on y'all's desk and y'all can go through it as well. But just for the interest of time, we've put together just a little two-page sheet that'll actually show the renewal, where we were and where we got them to, and the current what we have. In your book, it's gonna be a bullet point sheet to talk about the difference in the premium. But workers' compensation is strictly based off payroll and claims. You'll have an NCCI mod. And that's one thing that when they calculate your premium, that's what they'll look at. But the main point is the payroll's up, the mod is up. And in this handout, the second sheet shows the premium related to the claims. I know y'all don't like a graph too much, Jay, but I thought that would sort of tell the tale a lot of it because the years 15 and 16, and even last year, we've had a few claim activities. And that's what says increase the mod. Now, when we got the renewal from Mississippi Public Enemy, as you can see in the middle portion here, it was quite a bit higher. We went back to them, asked for additional credits, and they obliged because Rankin County is a very important county for this pool, you know? Now, we did approach the marketplace to every company that would consider writing it. But there's two or three factors that was kind of working against us coming off of a bad year for his claims activity. And the street, roads, and police scare a lot of these worker companies. So, we're fortunate to have them and they did stay hitched. They actually even gave a little more credit than they had on it last year to help offset the mod.
The mod's the biggest thing that changed. Would you provide us later with the discount that you got them to come off of?
Yes, and it's in the book and it's here. I'll go over this. And if any of y'all ever have any questions and just want to meet individually, we'll be happy to come back and kind of go over anything you want us to. But it has been shot thoroughly to the marketplace, but the renewal with Mississippi Public Enemy is by far the best option.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Moving on to other individuals who'd like to speak before the board. Mr. R.J. Reed, please, sir. Come on up. Mr. Reed and Mr. Brewer, looks like they're coming in tandem, both property owners there in the Greenfield Road area there in Pearl. Gentlemen?
I'm Lee Brewer. This is R.J. Reed. We own property in Greenfield, all on Greenfield Road, Commercial Park Drive. And we've had an ongoing problem for a long time, just not getting any better. And the problem is that the streets are potholes. We've got mud coming up in parts of it. And we've been trying to get help. It's in the city of Pearl. Mr. Reed owns Reed Food Technologies, which is a big operation. I've got two buildings out there that I rent out. And we begin to see an impact on our property. Our property value, particularly mine, has got to go down because the streets are in poor condition. And we talked Pearl under the last administration that fell on deaf ears. The new administration, we're making some progress already. And what we'd like to do is if y'all would work with Pearl. The mayor told me that they'd be glad to work with the county, furnish manpower or equipment, whatever, but they just don't have the money to do any paving. And the thing about it is paving is only about 200 yards. We're not talking about miles of paving. We're talking about one street. And it's just a mess. We need to help and we're asking y'all to help them if you can, to work with.
Just for creation, that's that route that prior to Heinz being built, that was how everyone got access to Heinz.
That's right. They closed that street off and I don't blame them and went down the road and put them in U and N.
But it still doesn't mean we need to ignore all the traffic you had for all those years trying to get access through there. And this came up a couple of years ago. And I think one of you gentlemen approached me and said that actually someone tried to tell you it wasn't a public road.
That's right. I had to fight that, had to carry my plan over there and prove that that is a city street.
Yeah, I think before they did that road, there's a lot of traffic. You have to vote for a precinct.
That's right. Voters couldn't get in to go because I had people complain to me and I thought it might have anything to do with it. They went up to the school, which was a union at the time, union, pipe fitters union to vote.
That's right.
And it's still a voting precinct. That is that precinct for Patrick Arms out there. Yes, that is my precinct.
Well, the same situation came up several few years ago on the, I don't know the name of the road, but it goes down between Air Gas, Burden Cook, back to S and H Steel. And they tried to say it was not a public road, but it turned out to be a public road and they wound up fixing a portion of that.
I think they accepted that it was their street, but...
But now, basically, they accepted, they just don't have the money to do anything about it.
That's right. They just haven't done anything about it. It is their street. But what affects me is that I've got some really good tenants in there and I keep the leases below the normal range so I can keep them. I'm afraid if anybody leaves now, I'm probably gonna have trouble renting one of those units because who wants to drive?
Well, you sure don't want your property values going down?
I'd rather go up.
I'm sure we'll do where we do to try to assist with that.
Go up along with the taxes.
I'm R.J. Reed. I have Reed Food Technology. My shipping and receiving accesses that road. I built my original plant at the same time that road was put in, which was in 2000. My drive is fine. I put it in properly, put enough asphalt in. That road was put in by the developer. I'm in the process of my sixth expansion out there at that facility. I'll be doing a seventh as soon as I get this one done. We've grown from basically three or four employees to about 50 we have out there. We've got a, our payroll competes. I've got a sister-in-law that operates or with a Kroger plant up in Indiana. We're very competitive with the union plant. In fact, we're more competitive. We pay better, have better benefits. I've offered the city and the mayor to actually repair that road and I'll pay for it if I could take it off my taxes. I pay a substantial amount in local property taxes as well as other taxes. So, I've been to, personally, I've been to Rankin first, MDA, the city council, previous mayor, the new mayor, and now I'm in front of a group that actually gets stuff done. So, I'm hopeful we can get something done.
So, you're willing to fix the road and take it off the taxes?
What's that?
You're willing to fix the road?
Yes, as long as I can take it off my taxes.
The road itself?
No, the cost of repairing the road. I would pay for the cost to repair it. I'll get it fixed if I could take that off my taxes.
What we've done recently is his new construction, the washout on the concrete truck, we're still dumping it in the street. And they are. They're trying to cover up.
Oh, I've been down. I've been down the road.
Sir, if you have something to ask?
I just want to understand that Mr. Reed's business, at least I know more about his than the other one, we have King Comedy Center, does the Comedy Center in the same area. So, Mr. Reed supports a lot of other regular county bids, like Taylor Made Labels and other businesses in the county, not just his business. He supports a lot of other businesses in the county.
That's right. It's bustling with activity. That Comedy Center is picking back up. It's way down. There's traffic in there. Somebody bought the old Seapal Restaurant. Dental Labs in there. I count eight to 10 cars every day in there. And it's a lot of activity going on in that one little sudden business.
That's a tax base for Pearl?
Sir?
That's a tax base for Pearl.
Yes, yes, it is. But anyway.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Ms. Loretta Stapleton. Sir, if you'd be kind to state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Bobby Stapleton. 124 Adams Road in Brandon, Mississippi. And my concern is about Adams Road. First, before I get started, let me let the supervisor know I do appreciate everything you all do in the Rankin County. Everything that y'all do is not going unnoticed. We appreciate you. But I know Adams Road, they are developing out there and they have tore up Adams Road pretty bad. They have tore it up. And I've been calling up here, me and my wife have been calling up here pretty much every other day concerning the road and keeping it clean. And I'm pretty sure the developers are responsible for keeping it clean, but if they don't keep it clean, who do we go to then? If they don't repair it as they tear it up, who do we go to?
Adams Road is...
It's off Hollybush.
Off Hollybush Road.
Off Hollybush.
Oh, okay.
You know, I looked at that road really close before this development ever started. We couldn't even clean the ditches because things, fences running in the ditches and stuff like that. And the road was needing some work at that time. And I was out there last week and the developer has a big, nice development on the left side of Adams Road that there's houses. I mean, we're talking half million dollar houses going on. And then he also owns the land on the other side of the road and their equipment does cross. But we have, the road manager, Mike Harrison, has worked very closely. They've got a sweeper and a water truck that sits there to where they can sweep it and wash it off if it gets too dusty. And we've been trying to do everything we can to keep that road in as good a shape as it is. And when this construction is, when they're finished moving across the road and that, we will assess the road and do whatever we can to make sure it's in good shape, at least as good or better than before this ever started. And I also went past there down to Adams Lane and stuff. And there's some stuff down there that needs cleaning up. I'm talking about not just the road.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, I think I talked to you about Adams Road. And we talked about the ditches and stuff. And like you said, the road...
See, we've got the fences now, being this guy bought both of those places.
Yes, that's right.
We're getting the fences out of there to where we can ditch it and do things properly. But before, we didn't have a right of way to even put a ditch, a proper ditch down through it. But this guy's working with us and if you notice, that fence moved 60, 75 foot off the road going down Adams on the left side. They moved that back far enough for utilities and ditches and stuff to be able to go forth in the future. So, hopefully, we'll be in better shape down the road. We don't, I mean, we can't ask him or the county to go in there and take this road and say overlay it right now when we got construction and equipment and stuff because it's gonna...
Tear it back up.
It'll tear, I mean...
Yeah, I understand that.
But we're gonna make, we're gonna make sure it's maintained and to at least the point it was before he started. And then whenever he gets past that, we'll relook at it and address it.
Yeah, I understand that, but at least we can keep it clean.
Well, we've got a sweep. We, I say we, the developer has a sweep.
Yes, they have a sweep out there.
We will keep our on it, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stapleton.
Yes, sir.
Moving on, there are no more, no other folks wanting to make the public comment. We'll move on to item number four, Old Business Minutes for number 15. Your motion?
Second.
Second, a motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Bishop. If I don't favor, say aye. I'll oppose. Our esteemed president's back, so I'll let him have it. You're at the consent agenda there, Mr. Cross.
Hey, thank you about that. Sorry about the late deal. Can I say one thing on a personal note this morning? You ever had something go crazy? I started out changing a tire in a suit, ripped the suit. I've got a jumpsuit on now. Feel like a convict. Sorry about that.
In case you missed, there was an announcement made. Pearl won the high school championship football championship.
Is that this weekend?
Yeah.
I've lost to Pearl my whole life, so them winning something else doesn't surprise me. Congratulations to Pearl.
Makes the motion prove consent.
All right, so you got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Don't talk about anything else? I feel lonely because I missed y'all. Is that bad?
Yeah. That is.
Most everybody, I believe. All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Motion passes. Item six, Mr. Sullivan, good morning. How are you doing?
I'm better. I feel the sting.
I could share some of your bright light in my direction, will you? It's kind of been a crazy day.
I don't know about how much I can shine.
That's all.
But you are wearing a jumpsuit, so that's more fitting.
It's the only clothes I had in my truck. I don't even think it's clean, so...
Authority issue check.
Doesn't surprise me. Doesn't surprise me. All right, Mr. Sullivan, good morning.
Good morning. Y'all ready?
I'm ready to go.
All right, I'm just waiting on y'all. Authority issue check, United Postal Service, amount of $10,000 for the 2018 homestead extension mail-out.
Second.
All right, so you got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item A passes. Item B, Mr. Sullivan.
Petition's change the assessment, 2017 real and personal property assessment.
All right, so you got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item B, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Ms. Harry, how are you doing this morning?
Fine, thank you.
Mike, how are you doing this morning?
Well, we're doing great. We're doing great. We're just starting opening these bids.
The first bid opening we had this morning is for the annual joint asphalt bids. Got to talk a little bit.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Slade.
May I?
How are you doing? Did Alabama get in the playoff?
You know what? Let me think. Yeah, I believe they did.
Well, they did, that's right.
I don't know that that's as big a news as the Pearl victory, but...
You're right, it's not. It's similar, though.
But it's always nice to get that kind of recognition. Thank you for that.
Great, thank you. You were gonna make a statement for us, I believe.
I'm the most surprised person in the room that that happened, by the way.
All y'all do is win. I understand.
The reason that I interrupted the bid opening process is that I think it's important that we have a quick discussion about the county's position on the semi-annual contracts that we are entering into. And so, with members of the bidding community here, we felt like this would probably be as good of opportunity as we would have to be able to present a little bit of a reminder to our bidders, to you guys, and to members of the public as well about some issues that we have had in the past, in the recent past, with the way that our contracts, once awarded, are being handled, not by our side, not by the county, but unfortunately by members of the bidding community, the vendors themselves that end up with our contracts. And we felt like it would be important to do this now before we enter into new contracts as a way of just signaling that the county is gonna take a much more aggressive approach to policing our contracts. When we enter into a semi-annual contract for vendor-related services, and we're not signaling any particular vendors out here, they know who they are. When we authorize the issuance of a purchase order for our commodities, we expect the commodities to be delivered to us in a timely manner. If we issue a PO for gravel, we expect gravel to be on the ground within the timeframe of the purchase order itself. We are putting 10-day turnarounds on our POs. And so, if we need asphalt, if we need gravel, if we need 610, we expect it to be on the ground within that timeframe. What's gonna happen is that in cases where we have purchase orders that we have time limits on, we will make sure that we have the ability to cancel that PO and issue a subsequent PO to the second loan. We're gonna try to do that consistently. We're gonna be fair when we do that, but we expect for the county, as a good customer, to be treated like a good customer. So, we just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everybody on the front end. If, at the time that this board awards bids, if we have members of the bidding community who don't agree with that process and can't abide by it, then we're asking them to let us know about that before we go into a contract with them.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. And I believe this is also nothing new. This is just actually enforcing what our original discussions were.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. All right, Ms. Harry, proceed on.
The first bid this morning for asphalt is from APAC Mississippi. This is out of their Canton, Mississippi plant. The first item they bid is item four, FOB-based course, 49.30 per ton. Item five, $56 a ton. Item six, 46.50. Item seven, $51. This bid is also from APAC. The plant mix is gonna become, this is from their Jackson plant for those particular items. But they bid on item one, $77. Item two, $79.90. Item three, $4. Item four, 46.70. Item five, 54.80. Item six, 45.90. Item seven, $49.
What was that last?
This bid is from W. Blain and Sons. Item one, 76.50. Item two, 83.50. No bid. Item three. Item four, $52. Item five, 58. Item six, 49. Item seven, 51. Yes, that's the copy. This bid is from AdCamp. Item one, $74. Item two, 76. Item three, $2.50. Item four, 51. Item five, 53. Item six, 50. This bid is from Dickerson and Bowen. Looks like 84. Item two, 79. Item three, $3. Item four, 50. Item five, 53. Item six, 50. This bid is from Blackledge Emulsions. This is gonna be on page two for the liquid asphalt. Item eight, $1.39 per gallon. Item nine, $1.65.
The first was one what, eight?
This bid is from Ergon. This is also for the liquid asphalt. Item eight, $1.40. Item nine, $1.58. Item 10, $2.93. And item 11, $1.91. And I recommend those to be taken under advisement.
Second, you got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Thank you, Ms. Harry. Item eight, or you're not done, are you? I'm sorry about that.
We're here for a long time.
That's right, you have four bids, four different bids. I got you.
The next bids are for the annual supplies. In the past, we've just read out who bid on which ones. Is that good? Okay, this bid is from J&amp;L Enterprises for clay gravel. This bid is from Warren Paving. They bid on the limestone and the riprap. This bid is from Ronnie Williams Construction. He bid on clay gravel, pea gravel, and washed gravel and some of the limestone. This bid is from Southern Crush Concrete, also bid on different gravel and limestone.
Slow down. Your stuff probably wears, you know...
He's older than me. He's older than me. This bid is from White Sand, same thing, the limestone and the different gravel.
You say he's older than you?
He is. I think. We're gonna act like he is.
Next, I thought you were gonna say he's a man.
No, I wouldn't say that on video.
Were you thinking that?
I'm not commenting. The next item is for precast bridge components. One bid received from Foley Products.
Was this, that was what, precast?
Precast concrete bridge. This bid is from S&amp;S Dragline for the bridge installation. It's the sole bid received. The next item is for the metal culverts. First bid received is from G&amp;O Supply. This bid is from Southern Pipe and Supply. Final bid for the metal culverts is from Coburn Supply. The next bid is for concrete culverts. First bid is from Southern Pipe. The second one is from Design Precasting Pipe. The next bids are for the polypropylene culverts. Second bid is from Southern Pipe. The last one is from... The last one is from Coburns. The next bids are for traffic striping. The first bid received is from McCrane Striping and Seal Coating. Second one is from Traffic Control Products. The next item is soil stabilization. One bid was received from AdCamp. The next item is polyurethane foam application. One bid was received from Bulldog Construction. Next bids are for concrete curving, gutter removal.
Removal? Just the removal?
And replacement.
Uh.
It's from Bulldog Construction.
Yeah. That'll be pretty easy, huh? Just take it out.
Don't be critical. Early in the morning. The next bid is from H.R. Square. The next item is for concrete sidewalk removal and replacement. First bid is from Bulldog Construction. This bid is from, received from H.R. Square. The next item is raised pavement markers, and one bid was received from Traffic Control Products. The next item is asphalt leveling and patching. The first bid is from J&amp;L Enterprises. Price per ton, $87.50. This bid is from AJ Construction. $89, $89 per ton. Final bid is from AdCamp, $92 per ton. Recommend those be taken under advisement.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow. Seconded by Mr. Morrison. Take under advisement. Any further discussion?
Well, when will you have all that ready for them to look at?
That's why I was saying, anybody that's out here, welcome to, after I open the rest of these bids, to come to my office and review them, or I will send bid tabs as soon as I get them done. Our goal is to have them awarded on the 15th meeting.
But I was just curious when they might be able to see it.
Yes, but they're welcome to follow me back to my office. I'll go over there and let them review them.
Thank you, Bridget.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Passes. Next item, Ms. Herring.
Next bid is for scrub seal, slurry seal, and micro-surfacing. We received one bid from T.L. Wallace Construction. Item 1, $2.45. Item 2, $2.30. Item 3, $2.39. Item 4, $2.55. They added an Item 5, but it was not in the specs. Recommend that be taken under advisement.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bishop. Take under advisement. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item 3 passes. Item 4, Ms. Herring.
This next bid is for the hydraulic excavator.
Mike, is this a small excavator, or Trico, or big one? I'm afraid of that.
The first bid is from Equipment Incorporated. It's for Dusan DX 235 LCR. Bid price, $193,126. Guaranteed 48-month buyback, $121,900. The next bid is from Pocket Machinery. It's a Caterpillar 325 FL CR. Bid price, $210,787. Guaranteed buyback at 48 months, $137,500. This bid is from Lau Machinery. PC 238 US LL 1, 1, what are they? It's a Komatsu, I'm sorry. Bid price, $244,000. Guaranteed buyback at 48 months, $147,000. This bid is from Stribbling Equipment. It's a John Deere 245G. Bid price, $214,160. Guaranteed buyback at 48 months, $132,000. Recommend those be taken under advisement.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow. Seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Herring, for all that. Mr. Harrison, Item 8, while you're still.
Submove.
In the motion. So we've got a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve Item A.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item B.
Request approval for utility permit for AT&amp;T construct fiber cable utility along across Vernon Jones installed between Caribbean Village Drive and Old Fanning Road.
Submove.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Item B passes. Item C, Mr. Harrison.
Request approval utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct a PFP cable and utility along across Autobahn Way installed between Eagle Drive and Autobahn Circle.
Submove.
All right, so got a motion by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item C passes. Item D, Mr. Harrison.
Request approval utility for Atmos Energy to construct a natural gas line of utility along and across 1126 Old Fanning Road to install between Span Drive and Spillway Road.
All right, I motion by myself.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Hey, Mike, I remember at one point, we mentioned and had the discussion of talking to PRV when they approved their same type of items for laying those type of lines. Did we ever send anything to them? Do you remember? I, we, I know we talked about that. I didn't know if we were mentioning that. What was happening to us is, a lot of the areas in PRV was going through approving, the approval of laying these fiber in these neighborhoods. The problem was, they're still coming in tearing up our roadway. So it's kind of like, I got two worlds out there. I got PRV approving the fiber to be laid, yet when they come in, they're destroying our roadway. And they're laying it inside our roadway right away. So I know we discussed having a conversation, or maybe a letter from Mr. Slay to remind them that hey, when you go on and approve these things, maybe let us know, keep us in the loop of it, because they're destroying our roadways and our subdivisions while laying their fiber, and we're not even approving the permits of it, so.
My friend, we have one right now, this Atmos one.
Right.
Matter of fact, I stopped till the day. They had, PRV had approved it.
Right.
And I told them, that's fine, they can run it on PRV ground.
Right. Well, and we were having the same issue in Magnolia Trail and several other ones where C-Sire was laying it, and they destroyed several of our roads and.
Not only that, they won't clean up from where they're at. They'll go tracked up everything.
Yeah, and what's happening to us is, they're saying they're still operating on their permit based on PRV, yet we're still not even in the loop of it. So we, they're coming and gone, we never know when they're gone, and.
I think there's a lack of understanding on the vendor's part that they need both approvals.
Right.
If they're going to be on PRV.
Can we draft some kind of notification letter as a reminder to PRV on that same side? Do you mind?
I don't mind at all. I, you know, but I don't know what kind of response we're going to get there.
Right.
But we'll certainly put on notice.
If we can get that letter, I'll take it to Mr. Segman and them over there, and even to their board, and bring up the discussion, if you wouldn't mind.
How do we get Pearl River's attention?
I don't know that we can. I mean, I, I mean, I think it's just kind of a spinning wheel to a certain point. Um, it's its own separate entity that kind of does their own thing. But, um, we, we've had several little issues like that that's come up. But this is one here where we're having damage to the roadways we put in, and they come in by the cloak of darkness, and we never see they're in or out.
Kelly's got his hand up back there.
Hey.
One suggestion or comment on this.
Sure.
When we develop subdivisions, the same companies, Atmos comes in and destroys what we've done, erosion control, other utilities that are put in. There, I know it's PRV, but it's Atmos to Benny, whoever they hired to come in, they're reckless when they get in and they have no oversight.
Yeah, and, and our fearful side is, they come in and we never see them. You know, they come in and out without the permit side. So if we could do something like that, Mr. Slay, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mike, on that.
No, you're fine.
All right, Item E, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, discussion of potential action to upgrade lights on Old Fanning Road.
No.
Yeah, this is a, a critical, crucial thing that we've got over here.
Make most approval.
No lights.
All right, so, so.
How much you talking about?
I think it's around $10,000 per light.
Street light?
Yeah, let me tell you what's happened. When we four-laned Old Fanning Road, there's, there's no turn signals.
These are not, uh, streetlights, these are signals.
Signal lights. The lights are already in place.
I thought you said they're streetlights.
No. No, they're, uh, these are traffic lights. And what they are, these are, what, what's happening is, we've got traffic lights on this area. Problem is now that we've got four lanes, we don't have turn signals. So we're having multiple accidents in these areas because you've got people trying to turn left or turn right into a subdivision, and they're blind from the oncoming traffic on two lanes.
These lights are not that old. Now, what, they had the four lights again?
Here's it, you know, because obviously. One, I asked about Vernon Jones there because of development coming online, and I knew that was about to be an issue. Well, then, a couple weeks ago, we had someone unfortunately pass away from a car wreck trying to go to another sub, Apollon subdivision. And so, you know, if we do those two, you know good and well, we're going to have the other neighborhoods wanting, you know, the ones that are not there.
You've, you've got several directional turns where they don't have signals.
How many were talking about?
Five.
Five.
Fifty grand.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
Bishop moved it.
I think, yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a life safety issue. Thank you, Mr. Bishop, for the motion. Seconded by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item E passes.
Aye, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Parker, good morning. How are you doing today? I like it. Everybody's having a great day around this place. That's exactly right.
I got a question. I got, I got a question though. Why were these lights not addressed during all the construction?
I don't know.
With the signalization?
We, we went on the board, and that would happen, so.
No, I, I'm not sure, I'm not asking you all. I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know.
Out here.
I don't know. It was definitely an oversight, I think, so.
Who was the engineering firm for the traffic lights? Is that, what's his name, the one that does it all?
Well, we were engineers on the road project.
As far as all the signalization, that's.
Yes, sir.
Where'd that come from?
And the project was set up for a, a turn lane, obviously. But that was all, th- this is the project that, actually, we haven't closed out with M.D.A. yet.
Is that our problem or their problem? The project being closed down?
I think it's who you ask.
They think it's our problem, but we know it's theirs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, it's costing me about $4,000 a mon, a month.
That big price, what was that again?
About $4,000 a month, just through back and forth paperwork. And there again, I just seem to comment a whole lot about M.D.A. right now.
Okay.
On the record.
I mean, you see, you see a light at the end of the tunnel here? I mean, do.
Hopefully, yes. I mean, they've flashed a light at us now for two years, but the light went out.
We've been trying to close that deal out probably now for eight months on Old Fanning Road.
We've had traffic on it forever. Not forever, but.
Yeah. Okay.
So years.
All right, Mr. Parker, uh, Item A.
Yes, sir. Which is the only item that I have on there. I am simply requesting authority for the President and the Board to sign the contract documents on our big overlay project which you have awarded. But through the state aid process, we have to have authority for the President to sign the contract.
Submove.
All right, so got a motion by Mr. Morrow. Seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item A passes. Thank you, Mr. Parker, good morning.
Make a motion, we take A, B, and C together to set that public hearing for December the 15th.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Uh.
I'm sorry, A through D.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, set items A through D. Seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. So we'll be at Item E, Mr. Slay.
Set up a public hearing for January 2 on the Doris Williams Conditional Use Permit, District 1.
Uh, make most approval.
Second.
All right, so got a motion by Mr. Morrison. Seconded by Mr. Morrow. Set the public hearing for January 2. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item F, Mr. Slay.
Set the public hearing for January the 16th at 9:00 a.m. for amendments to our land use plan and official zoning map.
Submove.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item F passes. Item G, Mr. Slay. Public hearings.
Here we go. Now I got my cheat sheet. Item G is a public hearing on the Arkright and Luckett Junior rezoning request, Highway 25, District 4 property. Mr. Luckett is seeking to rezone 19.33 acres of a 50-acre parcel from RE1 to C2. Property is located on Highway 25. The adjoining property to the north is zone C2. The application does not identify a specific commercial use. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Arkright and Luckett Junior rezoning request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that? All right, you'll come forward, please. As you come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Stacy Taylor. I live at 123 Oak Ridge Road North.
There you go. Hold on, start, start over again.
I'm Stacy Taylor. I live at 123 Oak Ridge Road North, directly across the highway.
Great, thanks, good morning.
And I would, we're trying to find out what this is going to be. We don't want truck stops or nothing like that over there.
Okay.
Is there any way we can find out what they're planning to do?
Yeah, um.
We, we.
I mean.
One of the people that's working with that is in. We'll, we'll give him, after, make your, then, and then we'll see if he can answer questions.
Well, I just oppose them putting convenience stores or strip malls or something like that over there.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Norman Singleton. I live at 110 Creek Drive, directly across from where this rezoning wants to take place. And I'm standing.
Do you live across 25?
Right.
Okay.
I live directly across from where this rezoning takes place. So I oppose this, this rezoning for this, for whatever commercial or retail service establishment that they're going to try to establish, because I like to get more information. As it stands right now, you know, it's, it's just hearsay, but nobody knows exactly what. But there's a reason why they want to rezone it. So we should, as, as citizens, should understand what they're going to do, what they're going to put there, you know. Uh, and, and I want to get a better understanding. I just recently moved here in Mississippi 10 years ago. So I want to get a better understanding, you know, because I am a property owner on both sides of that highway, east and west side. So I'd like to be more familiarized with it if I can.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Twenty-five is this?
It's up probably, uh.
You don't work the subdivision, uh.
I'll be half a mile north of Hollybush.
More than that.
Yeah.
Kelly, are you here to speak his favor? All right, why don't you come forward?
Yeah, I think we have one more gentleman in opposition.
The right side, if you're going up.
My name's James Ward, one eleven Jones Avenue in Pearl. I own property right next to the property they're rezoning here. And I have a daughter that's military and wants to build there. So my concern is if they zone this commercial, you know, will she be able to build a, can I build a, build one?
Oh, sure, this is residential.
Your property. Pardon me? It wouldn't affect your property, but what they're rezoning would be the property that he's described. It wouldn't change the zoning of your property.
Your property's locked in, zoned as it is, unless you make some up.
Let's you come and ask to have it rezoned, it wouldn't be considered.
Right.
Let, hey, Renee, refresh me on the zoning that this property is now, RE one. All right, and what can go on RE one? Single family homes as small as a twelve hundred square foot home and as many as the Health Department let them put, maybe one. Right, but that could be a parcel, could be one and a half acres. So they could be fifteen of them, or however many they could fit in there, as it is. It could do that right now, that anything. They could put those in there and.
How many acres were that?
Twenty or.
Well, it's a total of fifty acres and they're situated in zone eighteen of it, just to.
So if, the way it is now, if it's fifty and that's all RE one A.
RE one.
RE one. So you could have as many as thirty, something like, according to the Health Department approval, of whatever size homes they wanted to build without any other zoning issues. Is that right?
If they, um, you know, had separate one acre lots.
That's what I mean, if it's divided up. What I'm trying to say is, y'all, you've got to understand where it is right now. Would have been, wouldn't have to have any board change on zoning or whatever to put a subdivision in there. So think of that, what we're looking at, if it's zoned for commercial, would you rather have a subdivision like that? Or had you rather have something commercial? And I don't know, Kelly would have to tell us more of the idea of what the commercial thing, and I would be just like you. I live there. I don't know what's going on. But anyhow, I just want you to understand that it can, right now, they could go in there and bust that up and put it in a subdivision. And we wouldn't, it wouldn't require any more board approval here for that zoning.
Who is the owner of record?
Kelly, are you the owner?
Is this the first hearing on this issue?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And nobody knows what's going there?
Well, here's the guy.
You don't have to say what's going there.
You don't, that's not a requirement to move, and this is property on Highway twenty-five. And he's just asking for this, basically twenty acres, to be rezoned from this RE one to a commercial property. To be honest with you, the property up and down twenty-five is almost all eligible. I mean, Highway twenty-five is a major corridor going through there. It's Rankin County and.
You need to come up, sir, if you're gonna speak to the board. Who owns owner of record, Renee? Who's the owner of record? I can't find him on the tax rolls. What is it?
Green Earth Materials.
Okay, I found it.
All right, good morning.
Go ahead, say your name.
My name's Al Moke. I live at three twenty-five Kitty Hawk Circle. And we've come to find out, I'm sure it concerns you, what's going there. Don't you want to know what's going there? You make it sound like we just rezoned it. He can put whatever it says can go there. I mean.
Well, just the zoning doesn't approve what he comes in and says, I want to put something here.
So he's got to come back to do that?
Oh, yeah, many times.
No, if he rezoned to C two and he wants to do a permitted legal use within C two, and he doesn't need our approval, he's got to do the site, site plan approval. He doesn't need our approval to put whatever's permitted there.
We would have to approve the building and such as, you know, the physical things.
And not the type business. Can you, can y'all explain what C, what this is?
Sure, Renee, tell them what can go in C two.
Retail zone, um, it would allow, um, stores where everything is on the inside of the building. You can't have outside displays, any services, everything would be, you know, inside a building. Some of the things that could go there would be like office type buildings, daycares. It does allow some shopping centers with a minimum of three acres, veterinary clinics, pet shops, no outside runs, things like that.
So no mini storage?
No, anything like that, vehicle sales, plant nurseries, convenience stores, those things would require a conditional use. They would have to come and ask permission or apply to see if they could be approved for that use. A sign would go out on the property so, you know, you would be aware that they were asking for some type of zoning action.
So some of the things you've mentioned, like convenience stores and all, are not permitted outright in C two. They would have to come in and get a variance for it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Kelly, do we want anybody else in opposition?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I'm on the Singleton. I live at one ten Creek Drive, directly across the street on twenty-five and own land adjacent to that as well. Um, what we're trying to do, when they talk about rezoning, because I moved here, I'm the wife of Norman Singleton. We're just trying to get an understanding. You're saying zoning it, he's zoning it for a reason, for commercial property. Is that so?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what we're here, trying to, I guess, uh, talk to the board so it won't be zoned, so we don't have to go to step two. We can stop at step one.
I understand.
And that's what we're trying to do.
You're basically saying you don't want any commercial property there?
Basically, yes, because it's a residential area right now where we're at. I guess we're looking more or less of our offspring building houses along twenty-five. And that's what we're trying to stop and have a convenience store, dress store, directly across the street. We're just trying to stop there for me and zone that way.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Any other opposition? Kelly, on behalf of the developer.
Hey, buddy, I'm Kelly Foster, one of the developers. At this time, there is no specific plan for anything to be built there. We like the idea of rezoning at C two. We feel like there's an economic need in Rankin County. I do business all up and down Lakeland Drive, Magnolia Marketplace. We bought it, revamped it, leased it out. The commercial just north of us is C two. And they're, right at our property to our entrance, there's a median cut done by MDOT. And we plan on coming in and putting a frontage road that hopefully connects to the forty acres, I think, is north of us, that's already zoned C two. We've been working with the board, uh, the county on different things. In the subdivision, we actually have four hundred acres right there. Just in this first phase, we proposed a subdivision and for that nineteen acres to be rezoned C two. The subdivision requires a twenty-five hundred square foot minimum house, which would be five hundred thousand dollar homes or more. That we're putting right behind the C two rezoning request. So as a developer, I don't plan on putting anything, a truck stop, a convenience store, anything like that that would adversely affect my other.
Investments.
Three hundred and eighty acres that's back there. I want it to be first class. We're going to be very selective of who we sell it to, what their intention is. Want to get the best use out of it for, obviously, for the developer. And then ultimately, we want it to have a good effect on the county, whether it's tax base, jobs, just any kind of economic improvement. And we really came up with the idea because the median cut, for someone to come in there, they're gonna have to go to stall and come back down. Or they'll be able to come in and go and access different businesses, you know, in the future.
So you don't, so to answer their question, and I understand their concern. They, but you can't answer the question, what's going there, because you really don't know what's going there. But you also may sell this to someone else once it's on.
Possibly, yes, sir.
And so I do understand their concern. I mean, if it was me, I'd like to know what's going there, for I agreed to zone it. Even some don't want it all, but some obviously would like to know. In any rezoning we have, those are the questions they always have. Whether it go from RE one A to RE one, or from Ag to RE one A, they want to know why we're rezoning it. So I mean, that's, that's a fair question and the fact that you really can't answer it, I can, I can really sympathize with what they're asking. I mean, I'm sitting here going, well, if I was sitting right there, I'd be wanting to know the same thing with my property.
I think he just told you some of the things that he was gonna do, you know, but, but I mean, it's not like he's some fly-by-night person that's never invested in our county.
No, I'm not saying.
That's not his point. His point is if he sells it, and he may well do it, he may decide this is not the opportunity he wants to do, take his money and go someplace else. So now we're struck with a rezoned location there that we have no control over because we've already rezoned it. I'm receptive to the idea of rezoning that to commercial down the road, but given the concerns, the folks around there, I'm more inclined to go with Mr. Morrison. I need a specific idea. Yeah, you bring me a development plan. More than likely, I'm going to vote for it unless it's just something, it's just not compatible with what's going on out there.
I'm not, I'm not, and I agree, you're legitimate and love, we like the work you do and I'm not against it all. I'm just speaking, if I was sitting out there, and I try to put myself sometimes, if I'm sitting over there rather than right here knowing what, what I know. But I'd like for them to be, understand, and I understand that, and I think you do too, if it was your, your place too.
To, to answer some of these concerns that I'm hearing right now, uh, we took a lot of things in consideration when we bought the four hundred acres. And so the median card cut, the minimum house size out there could be twelve hundred square feet on one acre lots. So through elected officials, other concerned citizens, the neighbors, we didn't want to go out there and just slam in a bunch of houses. Which I've seen it, I mean, I'm part of Greenfield Station that we took out of foreclosure, and that's a great subdivision. So we really took the different aspects of the community, the size houses, the type of houses that were going out there. And so I feel like as a developer, we went out on a limb and raised the house size to half million dollar homes. And so, and part of that was we wanted to, and talk about what's going to go out there, that's defined in the C two zoning. You know, so I mean, that's where I would try to put that out there, that we worked with, uh, different neighbors, different officials, uh, and raised the house size, changed the covenants. We eventually, we, originally, we have a dirt pit back there, and that's what, we were gonna do, a dirt pit and do different things. And so we, we kind of maneuvered and put things out there for, uh, to, to be accommodating to the needs of the county and the citizens around there.
I mean, if he does development like he's talking about, as far as the large houses, I mean, that's a win-win for all of you. That just ups all your, the value. So, I mean, he, he's going in the right direction as far as this house size. We appreciate that, Kelly. I just, I'm just saying, I kind of do wonder what, and I can see their side of that, so.
I went over our, uh, in the work session, you know, and he showed us the map. It's already adjacent commercial. And it is Highway twenty-five, you know, so that's the only thing that, uh, you know, really, to me, is a selling point for this. Is that we're limited on how much frontage we have to be able to grow commercial places, so. And in respect to all you people, I think that, you know, he will present a quality product and, but that's just me.
That's what I hope if everyone, I want to talk to y'all, but then talk to them.
No, you can't though, but you need to address us.
Well, we just, we really went out, and that's what we worked on, was increasing the house size. I've done several other large lot subdivisions, and we're trying to, I can't attract five hundred thousand dollar home buyers with the truck stop. Which that's not in the C two zoning. So I just hope they would give consideration that we've done other things to help improve their values. Historically, what it does with larger, larger homes, we're not, we even got some ten acre lots in there that are gonna be very nice, but that could be ten more small homes. So just my residential end of this has me committed probably for five more years, and I'm gonna watch it like a hawk. It's for the stuff, whatever's defined in C two is a very light commercial, retail, things that, if some of the citizens' kids, if they build there, they're probably gonna go up there and, and spend some money. You know, it'll be conveniences as the growth goes out there, which it has to due to flood zones and different things. And the forty acres north of us, or twenty acres north of us, is the same zoning. And we wanted to work with them to tie into our same frontage road or access road that comes in right there, which I think would eventually will be nice.
Did you all know that the other was commercial? Is that anybody that's here?
Margaret Campbell, I believe. She's an elderly woman.
Margaret's not here, Margaret Campbell, no.
I just wondered, I just wondered, did you all know that the property that, uh, that joins some of this, I believe is the way you describe it, is already commercial? Okay.
Steve, you in here?
My question, what's the, the need then today? Why, why do we need to do it today?
Well, we looked at putting it in the residential first phase and then just with visiting with different officials and, uh, some of the other people out there, it was best to do it on the front end. So that we're planning for the street and curb cuts. Uh, it was just, it's just part of, this just didn't come up six weeks ago. We've been working on this for about a year. And really trying to study the best use, uh, you know, our focus is the residential part of it. And instead of just putting in a bunch of lots, we went to larger lots, larger sized homes, and wanted to blend it in with the C two next door to us.
One, one thing I would like to suggest, if I could, would be maybe we table this for another period of time, we could do some more research on it as a board. To where I know myself and Steve can look at it a little closer and, and find some more details out on it. Would you have a problem with that, Kelly?
Well, I don't have a problem with anything, you know, uh, not at all. Do you want me to get benchmarked, draw up like a little sketch of what could be and show the service road and where it would dead end at the other property?
Well, I think, and I think the main thing is that personally, speaking with Steve, we'd just like to do some more research on it, just kind of dive into it a little bit deeper, look at the land a little bit closer. Yes, sir. And talk to the people that are out there a little bit deeper.
Yeah, and educate or let these people get more information, education, where they realize now that as it is right now, there could be on fifty acres, like I said, thirty, thirty-five houses, small. I mean, there's, it's already zoned for that. And he, uh, he is a developer. He develops, I mean, and some of the very best in Rankin County, Clover Valley. If you went by there five years ago, you'd never thought that it could be anything like it is. It's a great, and he's nearly finished over there. He built roads and sowed everything. I mean, it's a great neighborhood and I expect the same thing. I mean, I sure don't, I sure wouldn't be entertaining even the idea if I didn't think that it would add to our community.
You know, that's where.
And, and we got to realize that when you buy land and you invest, and like you people did, you want to control what's on your property. And I don't want him to do something that will make your property less valuable. And you, you know, you don't want to do anything that would make your neighbors less valuable, but you do own it. And you bought it for a reason, and your reason may be to pass it down to your children. But I can promise you, at some point on twenty-five, where y'all live, your children are gonna sell that land because it's gonna get high. It's gonna happen, and you're gonna be right in here looking at somebody else like this. So it's a balance and act that we make sure we protect both sides.
I would just make one more statement. If I was a neighbor, I would be worried and concerned with it also. But historically, these types of developments and these types of commercial districts improves home values. It, it keeps the right law enforcement in the area. It just keeps that correct traffic up. When things are, I don't know, it, it all in the long term, new development can increase and help other, other residents, the whole area, whether it's the schools. I mean, there's a, uh, I mean, it's just raw land right now. And I understand their concerns, and that's why I think it's limited to C two. But yeah, and if I can help you guys, talk to them, if you want me to get a sketch or anything, I don't mind it at all.
Kelly, I'm not against it. I just want them to be, them to feel good.
I do too. I do too.
It also, I think, would help them knowing that you have a bigger investment, not just this one little piece right here.
Correct.
So, but.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, Kelly, very much.
So wondering, y'all want the tables too?
Yeah. May I ask, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
And the folks that are here, we, I think, given the interests here, we need to get to a date certain. That everyone will know this is when this matter is gonna be back in front of us for discussion. So we probably would want to. Our suggestion would be maybe.
We put, we were thinking of January sixteenth. That'd be next month. That'd give us thirty days, yeah. But that's all right.
That'd be bad for you.
No, no, sir, no. I'm willing, because it's so early and we don't know what's necessarily going there. But it really doesn't affect them. I was just thinking about putting a buffer zone, you know, fifty feet, but that's ultimately for my subdivision, because it'll be open on twenty-five. I was just trying to think of a way to maybe, if they were directly next door, but I don't think, I don't think it is.
You said with the nineteen acres commercial, that the rest of it's gonna go high acreage, I mean, acreage type development.
Yes, sir.
I mean, and we're zoned, what, RE one now, so, right, that's what?
One acre.
One acre lots.
Minimum one acre?
Yes, he's already done the other.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm saying is though, if he might be willing to go ahead and put the deed restrictions in place on the bigger tract that's to the south that adjoins it, I might be receptive to say that, okay, if he does that, that means he's going to. Regardless of whether he does it or if he sells that development to somebody else, they're gonna be in, in that same boat with the higher scrub footage homes.
Deed restrictions saying it's C two.
Yeah, keep some of ours in place.
See, that's my concern. I think that's mine and Jerry's concern, but go ahead.
You know, just to clarify, I want Kelly to misunderstand what you're saying, the balance of the duty acre parcel.
Or the four hundred acres, yes, sir.
Well, I, I think really all, all we have in the paper before us is the fifty acre piece.
Okay.
That out of which the twenty is coming for the rezoning request. The, the remaining, what is that, thirty acres, thirty, six, seven acres? Six, seven acres would be subject to the deed restrictions.
No, I'm talking about the whole tract.
No, but we've already approved a subdivision on the other tract. It's been done.
I'm just saying is, and if we go to, if we just say with the day, we approved his 19 acres. God forbid, Jody drops dead, a heart attack on, 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 on Christmas Day, and he sells it. Now, we're wide open to somebody, other developer moving forward. I mean, we don't have the assurances and know that what Kelly's going to tell us. I think that's what Jerry and I are, are kind of addressing. I don't have a problem with what he wants to do, but to help address their concerns in the community, we need to have something that, that binds the whole development moving forward, so that it's being represented as it is today.
Well, we, we've already...
But it's on a larger acre lot.
We've already, this all goes right.
Yes, sir.
So haven't we approved the planned development on, on, on? This is a construction plan review. So that's, that, that's already on the books.
And it's much larger than...
Man, but you got, the, the covenants have already been filed.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I could think I could handle some of your concerns and the restricted covenants, and we could go ahead and get council to start working on those and maybe have those ready in January.
Does that make y'all a little bit more at ease about what's going across the road over there, on that, if we, if we address it that way?
The main thing that would make the deal more easy, if Kelly would go ahead and start his, his development, we'd probably all be fine.
He, he's already started it.
Just...
I don't see anything, I don't see anything.
Well, I understand that. We're in construction. He, he can't sell the lots until we get finished with our construction.
We had no idea.
Yeah. We, I can address some of that. Uh, we've submitted the construction drawings, and there was, I think our engineer had some questions on the roadway, the way they lay back, and he's resubmitted that. Uh, we've already staked the center line of the road, just waiting for official permission to start. No pressure to anybody else sitting in there.
Hand, hand engineer or something?
The, the point is, is we're ready to start. I think it's imminent within four to six weeks, although it's about to start raining tomorrow.
They've started in the fact that the process, the walking it through as far as preliminary design and getting all those approvals, which that takes some time.
The, the stuff that actually protects y'all, it takes nearly a year from the time they come in here with their plan or idea for us to get to the point that they can move dirt. I mean, they have to have a, a lot of environmental studies and water study, water sheds, where we don't run water onto other adjoining pro...
Cultural.
Goes into it, and we are, you know, way down the road in that aspect, but he's getting close to moving dirt.
All of which takes place in a public forum right here. Board meetings open to the public every single time.
Hearing that, if we saw the larger subdivision started, I'm comfortable with that, because it, I really feel like it's going to be very soon.
Okay. Yeah, I feel better somewhat where, where we are now.
Well, you know...
Come up to mine, Mr. Sane.
Again, thank you all very much. Again, I, I, I'm pleased with what I'm hearing so far. However, it's still open-ended, and it's nothing definitive that, that we can take home and even have a discussion about, literally. You know, I, I'm concerned about what Mr., uh, Mr. Morrison said, you know, if he sells this property. Uh, and it, and it can be anything.
No, it cannot be. You need to go online and look under what C2 is permitted. Renee has that on the website. I mean, it sells specific uses that go C2. Anything outside of the, as a variance or condition has to come back before the board for approval. Can't be just anything.
Okay.
So I mean, you know, do that. Go back and research your...
And, and I certainly will.
Issues like that, and let us readdress those back in, or if Kelly can do that, can, in, on the January 16th meeting, you know, when we bring this back up. But that can't be just anything.
Okay. And, and also, I just, you know, I, I'm listening to a lot of things that, that is being said, and I, and I just want to say this to, to, to the board itself. You know, we get these, these big companies come in and, 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 you know, we hear the language that they're going to bring revenue and everything else. And so I guess that's the southern point. That's the sticking point. But you have to understand, we're, we're, we're people too, and, and we don't want to be just overtaken just because someone can come in and build a bigger establishment or put something there that's going to be revenue for the government. And I just would like for you all to take that under consideration. I have one of the largest homes on 25, so I have a great concern. And we're talking about $500,000 homes. That's what he's saying. Mine is like that now, but I want to protect my interests as well. You know, and, and so again, you know, I, I just want you all to know that I, I moved here to retire, here in Mississippi, and, and so I, I don't want to up, pick up and move again because something is directly across the street from my home that, that I own or my, adjacent to my property, because my, my lot runs right next to what he's building also. So I have a great concern. I have a great interest in this, in the way this thing turns out, and so, uh, give you an example. I never even received a letter, uh, that everyone else received, and I got, I own property next to what he's getting ready to do, so I'm really concerned. I'm really concerned that I don't miss the boat next time. I don't be here because I didn't get a letter or don't know the definitive date that they're going to have scheduled for.
Make sure you're addressed, now that you have your letter.
Okay.
Well, the 16th, that's it. That, where are you going to deal with this again on 16th?
16th. Thank you all again.
Alright, so, uh, Mr. Slade, we need to entertain a motion to table this at the 16th meeting?
Yeah, first thing we need to do is to make sure that nobody else wants to speak, because we are in an open public hearing. Is there anybody else that's going to speak on this matter? And we will, we will close that public hearing, and it's now appropriate for you to take action on it. I understand the action to be that you, that you desire to table the matter, so that would take a motion to table until the 16th of January.
I make a motion, we table it till the 16th.
Alright, so we got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion?
Yep, and so that it's clear to everybody in the room, that is the notice that will be provided about the hearing on January the 16th. There won't be additional notice provided. Property owners only within 160 feet of the property that's under consideration for rezoning are entitled to direct notice under the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And so there's probably a reason why...
Do we know the reason that Mr. Sane did not get a...
I don't know. I would assume that, that it's not within 160 feet of the property line.
He said it directly.
Yeah, that, that concerned me.
You're on, you're on, you're on property on both sides.
Understand that, that this is a carve-out section of a large 50-acre piece.
So, the adjacent land is actually the owner.
Yes, correct.
So there, there is, there is, there's land between you and what he's asking to be rezoned. He's asking 20 or 19 acres of a 50, and there's some space, you know, 30 acres between you and that. That would be probably more than the 100 and whatever feet.
Well, you look at where it is in Section K44, that 19, 13 acres, the rest of that belongs to my, to Mr. Hore and myself over in that area, so.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, we're going to take care of all that by giving you a notice now that we're tailing it to the 16th.
Alright, so we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Thank you, Mr. Slade. We're headed to, uh, let me think of where we're at right now. Item H.
Item H.
Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. This is a public hearing on the Clifton Rogers Jr. conditional use permit at 252 Clover Valley Road Boulevard. I'm sorry, it's a District 4 parcel. This time I'll open that public hearing. Clifton Rogers Jr. is seeking a conditional use permit to expand the five-star lodge, a wedding and events venue at 252 Clover Valley Boulevard. He's proposing an addition of 1,618 square feet. The addition will include a kitchenette, a storage area, and enlargement of the existing area, uh, existing activities area. This is a 160-acre parcel that's zoned RE1. This time we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Clifton Rogers Jr. rezoning, uh, conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition to that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition of, on that matter, and we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Well, I'll make a motion. We set it.
Second.
Oh, I got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Item passes. Item A.
Item A is a, this is something that we do as a matter of course. Anytime that there are amendments to the stormwater management plan, we conduct a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for any comments concerning the Rankin County Stormwater Management Plan. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on that matter. Is anyone here to speak on the Rankin County Stormwater Management Plan? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. There's no action required.
Alright, uh, item J then.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slade.
Very good. Uh, let's see. Ah, yes, this is the approval of a resolution that acknowledges the transfer of ownership of the manufacturing facilities at Airgas. Sorry.
Yeah, they'll be back.
Okay. Guys, this is, uh, uh, Airgas has transferred by way of merger its operations internally. Uh, this is from one aspect of their company called Airgas Carbonic Inc. over to an LLC. It's basically moving, uh, the, the framework of ownership without changing anything. Uh, this, uh, board granted Airgas Carbonic Inc. a tax exemption effective January 1 of '17, and by virtue of this internal transfer, they are asking that the tax exemption also be transferred to the new entity. So that's what you would be approving, simply an, uh, an extension of the already existing, uh, tax exemption over to the new entity.
Superb.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Is that right, David?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Item J passes. Item K, Mr. Slade.
Yes, item K, I would appreciate, uh, with your indulgence, that we move this to the heel of the docket, move it, uh, to the point after the executive session. I need to take you guys into executive to talk about that specific matter before you act on it, and therefore it doesn't need to be addressed before we can get to that point.
Alright, Mr. Slade, you need a motion to do that, or do we need to move it elsewhere?
No, sir. Just need to move the agenda.
Ms. Law, we'll move it to the agenda. Okay. Alright, thank you, Mr. Slade.
Alright.
Alright, item 11, Ms. Oster.
First item I have is approval to renew our workers' compensation with MPE, uh, for the year 2018-19.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Item A is approved. Item B, Ms. Oster.
This is to accept our corrected, uh, CPI calculations with waste management on our residential collection, our disposal, and our transfer station. They lowered it from 2.40 to 2%.
Superb.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item C, Ms. Oster.
Approval of pay application, um, number five to Chris Albritton Construction Company in the amount of $960,000 for $1144 in authority to issue that check.
Okay. A motion by Mr. More, uh, Morrow, excuse me. Sorry about that.
New board member.
I slipped up, I slipped up around there. Ever had one of them days, Jerry?
Yeah, every day.
I feel like Jay today.
There you go.
Alright, so we've got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr., uh, anyone, Mr. Gaines? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Item C passes, Ms. Oster. Anything else under additional business?
I have a real quick question. Mr. Slade, how does that wagon contract look? I think the last thing was about the 12 months. If you get that, we...
Well, you have C2 and a 1 on execution.
That matters, Freddie. We move on.
Alright, super. Uh, executive session, item 13.
Making a motion discussing the need during the executive session.
So a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Alright. If anybody would please clear the room for executive session.
Yeah, I don't worry about today. Let's be right. You ever have a flat tire? You don't want me, to be honest with you. I started about eight, pull over a flat tire, thirty-four.
You, you got a flat?
No. Eight fifteen, I think, a plenty of time. I roll them up this way. Hey, rip my pants. Jacked up a suit. So I got the, so I got the check.
What did you fall, I mean, fall for?
No, just first I couldn't get it out, it was a little spare tire. And then the jack sucks, you know, the little small jack. I couldn't get it set. The luxury, it's about, about like that.
Right, you can't get the thing, that's how it is.
I got somebody late, man. I did the math on this, or at least I tried. This was in the full board of my car. This is in the full board of my car. Sure. I'm not the guy you want. I'm telling you. Hey, just, hey, just frankly, I appreciate the stopping, and you're just going by, but I'll get the next guy. That's your best chance.
Could you call somebody?
It's your best chance, I'm telling you.
Last time I had a flat tire, I was on the interstate. I was going to change it, and after about the fifth car doing 80 miles an hour past me, I decided, I'm calling the tow truck to come get this sucker. That $80 was the best $80 tow I ever seen.
I believe. Uh, a motion to go into executive session?
Sell my sets, uh, what else? Litigation or personnel?
I think just, uh, estate property.
Land acquisition, selling them.
Sale of property. Motion by Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Executive session, it is Ms. Dandy.
Okay, guys.
We did property.